Through the July 12, 2018, monthly meeting of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District. Let the record reflect that all board members are present. Do I hear a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Move to pass the agenda.
Well, second.
Any comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, consent agenda is passed. Now we have comments from citizens present on agenda and non-agenda items. We have one person signed up, Larry Rich.
Hi Larry Rich, loop drive. About a month ago, dead fish started showing up in our boat slip and in front of our dock. And it lasted about a week. There were about four or five dead fish a day that we saw. And we've been on the lake for nine years. And usually about every four or five months, we'll see a dead fish. So this was kind of alarming, so I mentioned it to Josh. And he said to bring in some fish, which we did. And the ODF and W was going to pick them up and do some tests or something, which I think they never did pick them up. Is that right, Josh?
Correct.
So...where am I? Oh. Oh, yeah. Last week, I go out with my wife and get samples and stuff and go and help her test. Anyway, last week at the buoy at Thompson Creek, it was 579, which anything greater than 406 is red.
And just let us be clear, that's for E. coli sampling, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And then when we tested the culvert at the East Devils Lake Road, it was, I mean, it only goes up to greater than 2419, and that's what that was at the culvert.
That's what the reading was?
Yes.
2419?
And that's what it was again today.
Almost what it always is.
That's what it, yeah. That's what it is again today, yeah. So my question is, seems like we should be putting pressure on either the county, the state, or ODF and W to go up Thompson Creek, property line by property line, and test and find out where the problem is. You know, it was kind of alarming with the fish for about, it was about at seven to 10 days where the dead fish were showing up. And so anyway, that's my purpose here is, you know, if there's something we can do to find out where the contamination's coming from.
Just a clarification, the dead fish, was that right after the planting? Or close to, no?
Well, it was about a month ago.
And when did we do the planting? End of April? Josh, I'm looking at you.
I believe it was.
I think it was the, yeah. It was red.
Because the fishing derby was about the 19th, I believe, or the youth fishing derby down there.
Okay.
But I don't think, you know, there wasn't really a wind. It seemed like they were coming from...
Because I saw a couple at our place, which were a long ways from you.
Yeah.
Probably about a month ago, but it could have been more than a month. And I called Josh as well. He mentioned that you guys had found some, and I thought it was from the attrition from the planting, but maybe not.
I don't know. Could have been.
But I agree with you that something needs to be done on Thompson Creek. My understanding is, is that we have zero authority to make anything happen.
That is correct. We've notified Dave Waltz with DEQ, and I know they're working on TMDLs as a large project right now, and that seems to be their primary focus. It's on their radar, they are aware of it. I think that they're at a point now where they either are limited by their funding or staff as well, as far as taking care of that.
They're not limited by funding. No.
Is there a possibility of at least finding out where we are with that, Josh, and reporting on that on our next meeting? So that, I know that those things are concerning when they pop up especially.
It's been going on for years.
Right.
You know, and we always hear, "Well, we can't go up..."
Well, if we have a fish die off, that's, you know, I don't know what that's from, but, you know, I know that the Thompson Creek has, you know, some difficulties with, I mean, it's dumping water into our lake, which then, you know, we monitor for cleanliness and E. coli sampling. That's what we do on a weekly basis during the recreational season, but to see if, where the point source of that is, is important. And so, at least, at least maybe we can find out for you, Larry.
Okay.
Where things are. And so, if, can you do that for us, Josh?
Not a problem. I'll contact DEQ tomorrow.
Two things. What's the status of Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council?
Last I knew, they were very funding limited due to the loss of that last two-year grant that they did not get for the culverts upstream on Thompson. And since then, it's been a few months, I haven't had any contact with anyone from that organization, and they haven't contacted me. I can look into that.
I'm just wondering, you know, obviously, the more people you have working together on a project, even if they don't have funding, if we can collectively write a letter to DEQ and to anybody else that might, you know, give us some assistance there. Another question I have is, is there anything, any reason why we can't go property by property? And how difficult are these E. coli tests?
We've had, we have volunteers that would be willing to go property by property, but I don't know that we have any authority to go up the creek past the lake, you know? So I'm not sure where that stands.
And a large part of, you know, at least the increase that we might see in E. coli sampling around the lake is the increase in waterfowl. I know that we have a bunch of, you know, geese that inhabit the area across from, in that slough over there, as it dumps into the lake, and so...
But that's not going to give you a reading at the culvert, though.
No, no, that's not. I'm just saying that as we...
No, there's something going on up the creek, obviously. And I mean, I don't know. I think the creek is public property. If you're in the creek, I don't know that you have to have any authority.
That's good. I guess we could walk up, literally, walk up the creek.
You would have to literally walk up the creek, which I would be willing to help do. I don't know how to do it, but I would be...
We have volunteered the people to do that on the, from the SOS committee, you know, and never gotten any bites. But I think it would be nice to know where that's coming from, you know, at least the area.
Yeah, I mean, because, I'll tell you, in my industry, the DEQ operates 100% off of complaints. And they will not come out and enforce on something on their own volition. They will only, if they receive a letter of a complaint, then they will send somebody to check it out, and they have to by law.
Okay, so as a water board, could we pressure on...
So, or even as a private citizen, if we could say, you know, "Hey, we took E. coli tests here, here, and here, and up here it was fine, down here it wasn't. So somewhere between these two points, we have an issue, and we would like you to come out and check it out." The easier we can make their job, the more likely they are to come do it.
Right.
Well, I just also know that years ago, there were some tests done, and actually some genetic testing done, and they found a variety of different sources for the E. coli, including waterfowl.
Equine.
Equine, yeah. There's a variety of different things, and that information is available, but it's very expensive to do the genetic testing on that, and that's the reason why it hasn't been done since then.
And I don't know that...
And the other issue, I believe, is just access. Those are all, you know, the Thompson Creek goes through a whole bunch of private property, and gaining access to that voluntarily might be difficult.
The county, state, they can't?
I don't know, honestly. But at least we can, at least we can find out, Josh can find out through the, through this next, to the next meeting, and make, be able to report on that, Larry.
Well, if they have a complaint process, we should formally show our concern and give them the measurements that we have over the last consecutive years.
But we have it for years.
Yeah. And so, I think if we do a formal with the Water Improvement District, because that's, our role is water quality, and that's feeding the source. So I think if formally we do it, and then we find out what their process is, to be able to communicate back to us on what they're doing with the information. I don't think it's too much for this board to ask.
Can I be with you on a conference call to them?
Absolutely.
I'm somewhat available tomorrow if you, we can touch base on that, though.
Yeah, I will check. I know Dave Waltz is our contact with DEQ for sure for Thompson, and he sometimes is out in the watershed, but I'll see what we can get going. And then I'll get with you, and if tomorrow doesn't work.
Thank you.
Well, Thompson Creek certainly has always been of concern because of what it brings to the lake, and we're the depository of all of that. By the time it gets to, into the area where it's, you know, accessed by people who swim in Devils Lake, just like this week's report, I mean, last week it was high, and this week it's down in the green area. So it varies, and, but we should find out what's going on, or what can be done. So, thank you, Larry. Although we don't have anyone else signed up, is there anyone else who would like to comment before we get started with the regular board meeting? Great. Before we get started, one item of business that was left off the agenda is, at our July meeting, we always elect officers for the coming year, so we need to do that if...
I'd like to make a motion for Kent as chair, Tina as vice chair, and Bill for secretary treasurer.
So is there Bill or Steve?
I'm sorry, Steve. I was talking to you while I was writing.
So a motion...
Sorry.
So a motion has been made.
They've been fired so fast, haven't they, Steve?
You got it back, Bill.
To keep the same, same board members, same slate.
I would second that motion.
I agree.
Any other comments on the, from the board before we? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll keep the same officers for this coming year. Okay. Next, we have unfinished business. And so sewer committee, do we have a report from the sewer committee this time?
The sewer committee postponed our July meeting to the 19th because of some meetings that are taking place this early next week. So we will be meeting on the 19th, 4 o'clock, at the community college.
Okay. Special projects and events. Bill, did you have a report from them?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring us up to speed on our little events that we had going on over the 4th and prior to the 4th with the safety program with the sheriff. I believe we had about 20 people show up for this marine safety operation, and a few people got stickers on their boats, and a few people got updated on what kind of equipment they have in their boat, so that went really well.
The citations were given.
Zero. We had three or four modifications to boating equipment, and other than that, they were pretty happy, and they were looking forward to having us next year, too.
So the sheriff's department was, felt it was very much a success, and would like us to sponsor something like that in the future.
True. Yeah, correct.
Very good.
I've got another update on our meeting, actually, that we had after that. And the minutes will show, so I'll pull them up here. So after the marine safety event that we had, we went ahead and did our meeting at Regatta Grounds, which went over really good, too, I think. So the minutes for that went as follows. Suzie Henderson was grateful enough to record these for us, so here we go. The attendance was myself, my wife, Tom and Sherry Rice, Steve and Nancy Brown, Larry Rich, Josh Brainerd, Collier, George Rovoff, Bill and Sue Henderson. Also in attendance were the Marine Board deputies Lopez and Doherty. And the meeting began at 10 o'clock with myself calling the meeting order. The first order of business was to the introduction of our guests, deputies Lopez and Doherty, and discussion of their roles in regards to the lake, as well as setting up a future date for Boat Safety Education Inspection Event to be held in the spring. They were very forthcoming and helpful. They are funded by the Marine Board and more than willing to do a presentation at which boat owners can have an inspection, receive their boat or safety information pamphlets, and receive a sticker for their boat that would prelude them from being stopped for an inspection while on the water. To be noted that the very minimum, a boater must have the appropriate number of life jackets and a sound-making device in their boats at all times. This includes COAX. Also to be noted, there are only two marine deputies to patrol all of Lincoln County, at least by this note taker. I'm sorry, many questions were asked, and much was learned by the note taker. The date for the Boat Safety Presentation would be June 23rd, from 11 to 1 at Regatta Grounds. The setting of the dates for the West Side Cleanup this spring will be Tuesday, June 5th, was decided upon for the East Side Lake, and Tuesday, September 11th, for the West Side of the Lake. It was discussed and decided that there would be, there would not be a 4th of July Cleanup. Reason for that being, there's actually very little to pick up, as it is mostly, sticks to the bottom is sediment. We are still going to have a 5th of July Cleanup.
Which we did.
Which we did, and which yielded very minimal amount of debris, other than a few scattered various non-related 4th of July debris. I think most of it dissipated. The paper actually was floated to the bottom, settled. And we raked up about 300 pounds of paper, wire, unlit, miscellaneous debris off of the surface of the barge. So anything that wasn't, it didn't explode up in the air, 600 feet or higher, was on deck and was swept up. By July 3rd fireworks event, we will have at least one of the deputies in attendance at that event. Discussion was regarding the possibility of some PR work with local residents, children and grandchildren, which were there many of in attendance, regarding boat or safety, and just a face-to-face connection between the deputies and the public. And that is really key to their participating in that, is they really want input from everybody that uses the lake to come out and see them, meet them, and have an inspection, whether it be a boat, or a kayak, or paddleboard. So they're really anxious to get to know their neighbors, so to speak. Number four, other topics were discussed. I had reported that the, that I had, Phil Sexton reported that he has been cleaning out around Vivian's Restaurant near the west end of the lake, so the small boats can use or can tie up to their dock. The mouth of the river's really shallow right now, but there's a little bit of activity. We've got a small thruster down there pulling about 400 gallons a minute and pushing it towards the ocean, so we got a little bit of flow working there. And we have enough depth to accommodate a boat at this point. It kind of depends on whether or not, you know, how fast the lake goes down, or how often people use that area, so that they can maintain some kind of water depth for boats to have access to their dock. And it's, it's happening, so the water's not affecting them at this point. Although it is below our impoundment level of 9.3, it's down at 9, 9.2. That's it for Vivian's. Julie had an example of our new signs to be put up around the lake at specific locations. They are beautiful, simpler than the old ones to understand, and much easier to read. A huge thank you to Julie for all the work on this project.
Great job.
Thanks, Julie. Steve, Nancy Brown reminded that the DLNA fire fundraiser is May 27th, Memorial Day weekend. The floating dock will be moved there, as in past years, to the Browns' dock, with access from both water and parking up above. Hot dogs will be served again. Were served, they were good. We had a good turnout. They also had live music, and this is a kid-friendly event, so thank you very much. It was well worth it, the time. I also talked about thanks, and anytime anybody sees Joe Miller, Director of Parks and Recreation, give him a heads up. Thank you. He does a lot of work that nobody really gives him credit for. So he's really an advocate for these parks and making them sure that they look good. Also, the reported was that the summer water testing will once again resume, starting two weeks before Memorial Day, continuing through Labor Day. Once again performed by Mary, Larry Rich, and Kathy Kramer. Thank you.
Good job, you guys. Again.
For their hard work and diligence. The date for our next meeting was scheduled to be June 23rd.
It's already passed.
Oh, that we've already had?
And it was good potluck.
It was a wonderful potluck.
Yes. One thing about the Special Projects Committee, we know how to eat after the meetings.
If, a final word, best line of the entire meeting, if only common sense was so common practice, wouldn't this be a perfect world? Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. All right. Save Our Shoreline, do we have a, Mary Ellen?
Well, I think our intern's going to get introduced one of these times, right? Soon?
Do you want me to, you want me to go ahead and do that? Someone with the card in front of her?
Since I'm going to talk about her.
Josh, I'm going to have to ask you to go in front of the mic, because nobody at home can see or hear you.
Speak into the microphone.
Got me?
Got you.
Test?
Thanks.
Good. All right. This is Krista Gabbert, our new Devils Lake Water Improvement District intern for the year. She is from Wasilla, Alaska.
Oh, wow.
So our weather does not scare her here.
Yet she still has a sweater on.
I know. I already gave her, gave her some info on that, what's going on here. Thought you were hardcore. But anyway, she's helping us out a great deal with sampling. She's been working with Mary and Larry and Kathy the past couple of weeks to learn how we do our bacterial sampling. She also has a lot of experience writing and blogging online, which we're definitely going to get some projects going with her here soon. She's going to help us do a little bit of work on our website and see if we can get a little more information out to the public, so...
Great. Welcome.
Welcome. Krista, how long have you, I mean, how many hours a week are you working approximately?
20 to 30.
Oh, okay, good. And you've started already?
Yes, I have.
Great. And what's your impression so far?
I'm really enjoying it. I'm excited to look into making aquaponic floating gardens for the Save Our Shoreline.
She's been talking with Mary.
All right, very good. Well, great. Well, thank you for joining us this summer, and we look forward to having you at all of our meetings and seeing you around the office. Thank you.
Krista, if you want to stay there with Mary, that would probably work out great.
Okay, so she was my partner, Larry was the driver. He tells us what time we took the sample, you know, how they time, and he's still, right? So she was dipping all the samples. We take 15 samples, right? Right? And so she learned it all, and we went through the whole procedure, and she knows every site, and it's also on what Josh posts. Those are on a map there.
Right.
Forgot to tell you that. That'll help, too. But we also go outside of East Devils Lake Road to get the Rock Creek sample that's coming through the culvert and under the road into the lake. And then we go across the road on East Devils Lake into Thompson Creek, just right there at the culvert, walk down the muddy little thing, and dip another sample there. We also, without Krista, before she came over yesterday, we went up Park Lane and went up to where the culvert crosses over to the other side there, public land, and dipped one there. And what we found was, do you remember the number that was up on, I don't either, but anyway, it was just barely red up there? And it was as red as you can get, and we can't even measure any further at the culvert. So that was just one, one, two points of time, but I think we should continue that Park Lane one, maybe? What do you think?
Yeah, why not?
It gives us another, another site that's still public, and maybe we'll see a pattern of it's all coming from beyond that and into the lake. But my first reaction when I saw that last week, because the buoy was red, at the, in the lake buoy, and I said, "Well, then, let's just plug up that culvert." Knee-jerk reaction, wasn't it? Yeah. Let's just block Thompson Creek and not let it come in anymore if it's going to be polluted. Larry informed me that the, that the road would flood, so...
Then they do something about it, right?
Not a good idea. Yeah. So then Larry got on to, you know, "Why don't we just do something about it?" So that's, that's what his talk was about, but... So we're doing sometime during the week, so that we can get it posted by Thursday, since OCCC is closed on Fridays. We have to get in there either Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And this week, we did Wednesday, Thursday. So Krista went out with us in the boat, and we got the samples, and then we took them into the lab at OCCC and processed them, right? Poured them in, put the little caps in, and Kathy knows the whole process. And it's a, what it does, it causes E. coli to fluoresce after it's gone overnight in the incubator. So she learned all that, and she's a real study. She's in college, you know? So she learned all that, and it was really fun working with her. So I think we've got a good intern.
Right?
Yeah. But the Park Lane, if, if the board approves, then I think it would be good to get that point in there. That would be 16 tests. Just do it for a few weeks, maybe? See if we've got a pattern there.
Well, we have test data at the culvert, just as it enters the lake. We've had that for years.
Yes.
And we changed our protocol several years ago in order to actually test what's in the lake, not what's coming into the lake, but we decided to continue doing that.
At the culvert across the lake.
At the culvert, because we have ongoing data there, so...
But I think for the purpose of if we're going to contact the DEQ and we can get that reading, again, the more work that you do for them, the better, in my opinion.
And we're not on private property. You know, you just pull over on the road and do, just like on Rock Creek. It's just up there, you know?
Right.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to keep testing it, too, because there was quite a difference from there to where the culvert was. Well, one time you walked up, last summer, you walked up Thompson Creek, and there was some tube, a pipe, that was putting things in. So she tested that, and it was really hot, too. We call it hot, or red, or, you know, beyond.
A pipe?
Yeah. That's what she found. I walked up Thompson Creek a little bit, and there was a pipe coming out that I hadn't seen before, and tested that, and it was very positive. But then the next... The pipe was gone. The pipe was gone. So... But I think it's worth mentioning that this week, at the buoy, it was all green. It was green this week, yeah. The whole lake was green, the outer edges weren't, but that's good. That was really good. No algae blooms so far. We're in mid-July, and no algae blooms in Detroit, so, so...
Well, the clarity of the lake is fantastic right now.
But did we have 13 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, with the Secchi, we had 13 feet of visibility, so really good.
Very good.
Yep. Yeah.
All right.
Can you think of anything else?
Not at the moment.
Anything you didn't learn? Oh, and then the second day after, it's in the incubator for about 18 to 24 hours, we came in and we read the cards, which are big bubbles... hours, we came in and we read the cards, which are big bubbles and little bubbles, and there's a mathematical proportion there that gives us that number that tells us whether it's green, yellow, or red.
Okay.
So that's the whole procedure. Makes sense.
We appreciate you continuing to do that, you and Larry and Mary and Kathy.
And Kathy.
Yes, and Kathy. And so it's great. We appreciate that a lot.
Sure. Any questions for the SOS committee? Okay.
Couple things, Krista.
No, thank you very much.
I thought I'd report, too, that, you know, we were planning on doing an SOS project in the lake back in April, I believe it was, and the plants that we received were not appropriate for planting in the lake. And so I took care of those hundred and twenty plants for a period of time, and we have since distributed those and into three different sites. One at my neighbor, Jim Loopkey, he's got about fifty feet where we moved his natural area back, it's probably six to eight feet, and planted approximately forty plants there, and those continue to thrive. We've put approximately thirty along the rich, christy property line there. I don't know how those are doing.
They're doing good, except the something ate two of them, but it's coming back. I also put six plants in the floating garden. I forgot to mention the floating garden, and they're just thriving. They're really doing well. That garden, I'm writing it up for Krista because she's interested in making that a project this summer, so I have to get it written up pretty fast, what to cut and what to glue and what to put together, stuff with bottles, right? So we went over that, but I've got to give her the write-up. But the plants grow, and the fish keep the roots kind of trimmed up for me, and it kind of becomes, you know, a really symbiotic relationship with the lake, drawing the nutrients from the lake. There's very little soil around the plants now, but they're anchored by the roots that developed, and it's fascinating, isn't it? It's really fascinating. Yeah. So the plants are all thriving, except one little plant that shouldn't, I shouldn't have put in there, but I'll replace that. But the ones that we got from Blake's, I put six of them in there, and they're just thriving.
Good. And then, yeah, we purchased a hundred and twenty plants, and then we, Charlie Mena, across the lake, he has been redoing his property, and he has a large area that needed revegetation, and so I placed fifty over there with him, and he's very happy with what's going on and continues to watering those. As I was thinking about what we've experienced so far with the SOS program, in the fact that we've found plants that thrive really well, especially if they're tended on land, it's the plants in the water that are the difficult ones. And so if we can find out which plants can actually grow in water that's somewhere between a foot and two feet deep to start them there, that's the key. But to date, we don't have exactly what those plants are that are easy to propagate. I'm willing, and I'm sure that my master gardener friends would be willing to help propagate plants if we could get them, get the right information to do those plants, because I have plenty of room at my property and am willing to tend those. But we need to, you know, put money where it's actually going to do some good, and then look toward next spring of planting again, trying, making another attempt. But the water plants to date, we haven't had any success. At least, we haven't found the right plants yet, so.
But the six, and I took samples of all but the camus that was a bulb. I didn't think that would be good soaking in water for a year. So I didn't plant that, but the others I put in, and they're thriving. So they're hydroponic.
Right. And then we've also been contacted by another homeowner who's very excited about doing an SOS project, and they have about seventy feet of property that they're willing to move on if we can get the plants for them this summer. So they're willing to move on them. And they have the perfect area to develop, so it could work well. So we're at least making some progress with them.
And Blake can, we can get those from Blake, because he knows which ones, the sedges and the-
Or we can find out what those, we're going to need a number for them, but, yeah, that was part of what I was supposed to do this week, was to find it, to touch bases with Josh, so.
Well, do you want to talk about your idea?
No.
Okay. Not so much.
I have a question on the floating gardens. Can you leave those in year-round?
Yes. I pulled it into the boat slip during the winter, so that it wasn't beaten up by the waves and everything. It just did fine, and then we pulled it out in April, out in the front of the dock, and I put on my waders, and everyone left. And I got in the water and weeded it, and that is the only maintenance that it requires, just brushing along the outside to clean up the white, you know, that was all mucked up during the winter. And then I pulled out the invasive, little floaty green things that were in all the baskets, and then just reset, kind of, you know, centered them a little bit and kind of weeded them and trimmed them, pulled out the dead stuff, and it looks great. It's now sitting in front of the dock, so if anybody wants to come over, it's just floating there.
I want one of those.
Pretty neat.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
So I'd like to add a little bit to that, and my offer still stands. If anybody needs any kind of vegetation, you're more than welcome to come to the lake property and harvest by the five-gallon bucket full. It seems to be a good size plug to start if you have an active shoreline.
The ones that I took from you and Julie on your property, they're doing so well in the floating-
Yeah, a lot of the stillwater plants thrive in this kind of weather. It's just a matter of, you know, you need to be really mindful of where you try and plant these, because if they're, if they get any kind of wind exposure from the southwest, they're going to get beat up, and they really need to have a good, established environment to survive in that. And being in the floating garden, it's just perfect.
Yeah, it is. It really is. And this relationship with the lake and drawing the nutrients up, and you just don't do, and I don't have to water it.
Yeah.
I don't have to feed it.
See, and with the inclusion of four hundred homeowners, you have to have one.
Yeah, if they can't plant on their property, this floating garden is kind of a good solution, and it's pretty. You could do potatoes and tomatoes and basil and, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
You could do, I did sedges and things that we kind of want on the side of the lake. And what we can do is propagate from these that are in there, because they're really flourishing in that floating garden.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
All right. Any other comments from board members? Okay. Projects and operations, Josh, you want to report on that? Devils Lake Conservation Aeration Project, where are we at?
Sure. All right. We are at a very good spot with the Conservation Aeration Project. We have the approval to move forward of the project and award the project to Lakesavers, which we did in the last board meeting. We've been, the staff's been in frequent contact with the company to coordinate for the start date, the inbound project materials, handling, and storage, of getting everything here, getting John Tucci mobilized and all of his equipment and team here for the install. We've contacted Pacific Power to begin the process of setting up the account, requesting the project power to the Water Lane site, and coordination for the electrical permit. Payment has been sent for that permit. All requesting documents have been completed and will be forwarded to Pacific Power on, nope, we already did that, way ahead of myself. We received the electrical specs and drawings and photographs that we will require to install the unit. We met with Justin Mena of Greenlight Electrical, walked the Water Lane compressor site, and provided him with the appropriate documents for our requirements. He's submitting a proposal to us to provide and install all project-acquired electrical equipment, support the project mechanical equipment, and all related permits that are going to be required for that electrical install. We're in frequent contact with Lakesavers right now, July through September, to ensure all pre-construction activities are coordinated. We're processing the Department of State Land Special Use Application, which has been pre-approved. We had to submit some additional paperwork to them, which actually went in the mail today, as well as the permit fee has also been submitted to DSL. This special use document, similar to utility easement, is a requirement process allowing us to install airlines and diffusers on the lake bottom from their organization.
So given all that, where are we at?
Where we're at, we are on track. We are absolutely on track. We are not behind on anything. Everything is going very smoothly at the moment. We're really just waiting on paperwork to come in from the two permits we have out, one of those being the power to get hooked up. Essentially, at this point, everybody has seen it, everybody knows what's going on. They've been briefed, including our contractor, Lakesavers, John Tucci, and we are setting up for an install date in September.
I know Tom came tonight. Did, is this the time when you'd like to be, give us a little update on things with what's going on, Tom? I know you're kind of the key person for this, the project, and this would be a great time for any questions from the board or staff or the audience in order to, for us to move forward.
Yes, I'm Tom Wood. I'm project manager for the board. Josh has briefed us well. I spoke with John Tucci today. I asked him for a contract document from him. He said, "Great idea." He said, "We have one that we're just finalizing." It's a small document. It is very inclusive, though. It has all of the insurance requirements, has good protections for the contractor while he's here, while he's en route and while he's here. It has protections for his equipment during shipment. It has all of the requirements that we would expect of a contractor while at the lake, such as insurance for himself, insurance for his equipment, so it protects us from any damage, and it removes the liabilities for the board while he's here doing work. It gives us all of the protections. It cites specific language for any change order, deductive or additive that may be required on this project. So I said, "Great, let's get it in. We'll take a look at it. We'll make comments. It'll be revised as necessary." And then, once it's agreed upon between Tucci and company and the board, then they will sign first, ship it to us for your signature, Kent, and then that's locked in. So he said, "We can expect that document in about two weeks." Additionally, I talked with Justin Mena, the electrician proposed for this project, and I asked him to give us an estimate of costs. He has not met with Pacific Power, because they have not received our documentation nor our fee yet, for the permit and for actually setting up an account. We do not have an account as an entity, because we lease property, rent property, so we really don't have a physical address driving an account with them. So they're scratching their heads, trying to figure out what to do with us, and I said, "Well, give us an account." And our place of business will be Water Avenue, Water Place, rather, off of Loop Drive. That's where our mechanical equipment will be. And they said, "Okay, great." So they're doing that. Justin cannot give us a full estimate, because he's not sure what the power company will install as a line service, whether it will be overhead or underground. So I had him price out, worst case, and his estimate is not to exceed $10,000 for the entire electrical installation. That includes the equipment that Tucci brings in, includes switchgear, it includes undergrounding power for a hundred feet, which would be trenching, conduit, backfill, all permits, and two days' labor for two, for adjournment and a labor. So I doubt it will be that much, but to be safe, not to exceed $10,000 is the estimate for that. So we really have three costs that will be, that will fall under a request for resolution that Josh will make in a moment to you, and that would be the Tucci contract, which is in the range of $125,000, the Mena, small proposal or invoice, which will be less than $10,000, and then any fees that Pacific Power will charge. And I asked Pacific Power to lump all of their fees and amortize those across a twenty-year invoicing structure for the power for that compressor, which is what normally happens when a project is capitalized, rather than expecting a client to pay a significant amount upfront. So they will do that and get back to me what that is. But generally, if I can't get them to comp the service to us for free, then they will amortize it out over a long period of time, which will make the first cost or upfront cost minimal. So I'm seeing two costs that will come before you. One is Tucci, the other is Mena, and I'm seeing it not to exceed $130,000, $135,000. And the budget allows for $150,000, but of course, we don't want to be at $150,000. We want to be less than that. So with that, do I, are there any questions from you or me on this project?
Well, are we close? So with, within two weeks, then we should be able to sign a contract? Is that correct, if we agree as a board? And then, are we still looking at, I know originally, we've looked at around September 15th as being our start date in two weeks, and we're in and out?
Yes, exactly. Start date is not before September 15th, based on the ODFW approved in-water work period. Cannot be later than one February. So if Tucci's contract is here in two weeks for review, that gives us plenty of time for you to consider, sign, and approve it. What I'm recommending tonight is that the board consider a resolution to improve the project in concept, and I believe Josh has the resolution forms for you to review and approve. And that, then, would officially make the project an approved project, and then we can get the contract in, sign it, and review it at your leisure, and then we make the calls and get everything turning. I have all the contractors and Josh as well. We have them queued up to begin work, but we've given no approval to begin work. So that would be based on a resolution approval tonight, and then the signature contract with Tucci. So we have everything lined up, ready to go on, actually, before September 15th. The electrical work has to be done in advance of Tucci coming in.
Right.
So that has to be set, including a pad, ready for him to come in and drop his equipment on the pad.
I mean, that's an unimproved boat launch over there with a big log that I drove, that we drug up on shore three or four years ago that we were hoping someone would take care of, but it hasn't. But, you know, so that will take care of everything, ready for Tucci to come in, and we're all set, then?
Yes.
Comments?
So I guess the only thing that I'm hesitant on, we have the concept of the project, we've seen the drawings of the project and everything, and so we're being asked to sign a resolution because everybody's geared up to start, but we still haven't seen, the board has not seen any written documentation of the contract, Tucci's, or work orders, or scope of the installation. On Tucci's side, the board had had the conference call with John in executive session at the college.
Two, I think.
Two. So I'm comfortable with that. What I, what I'm concerned about, and I think it's an order of business, if we're going to approve in resolution, as I stated, $125,000 in concept expenditure, we still haven't seen the contract in the language. I trust, Tom, what you're saying, that it's going to have the cost overruns clause in it and the safety measures on it, but you said that you haven't seen the document either, but you've had discussion or negotiations on what the document should have. But nobody's seen it, and I have a problem approving anything if we haven't seen it.
I guess my question, Tom, is, I mean, I see the resolution as written here, an expenditure up to $150,000. If we approve this tonight, let's say we adopt this resolution tonight, then the next step would be when the contracts actually come in, then we have executive session, and then after we've looked at the, and scrutinized the contract, then we move into open session and approve the contract at that point. looked at the, and scrutinized the contract, then we move into open session and approve the contract at that point. Is that correct?
And that would be a month from now. Another way of doing this would be to strike the Tucci language from the resolution, leaving the concept of the project intact. Approve it tonight. If the Tucci contract is problematic, and we can't immediately get it squared away, or straightened out, or to your liking, then we stop the process, and there's nothing to say the board can't delete that resolution or remove the resolution by another resolution. Resolution is hereby rescinded. And then that would probably stall the project for a year, and that would give the board ample time to reconfigure the process, search for another round of contractors, and start again.
Is there any reason why-
And I don't mean to say this to be an alarmist.
Right.
I'm just saying that we're, we're in the zone of time now.
Is there any reason why we can't have an executive session, I mean, basically what Kent said, an executive session, review the contract? If it is agreeable, then move into a special, special meeting, open session, and approve it?
Sure. The other way is-
Because when are we expecting the contract from Tucci?
Uh, two weeks. But there's another way to do that, and that is the board comes up with its own contract. And we send it to him for consideration and his signature, and then back to us. But I wanted to state an appropriate precedent of offer acceptance. So Tucci offers to do work per a scope and a materials list, and a list of timing and completion expectations. He signs it, sends it to us for review, consideration, approval, and our signature. So it's offer acceptance. The two signatures create a contractual relationship and document.
Right.
Didn't he already do that?
Well, what we have is a proposal from him. It's not signed by him, and it doesn't have certain protective clauses such as required insurance placed on him while he's here.
What I'd like to see is some kind of a format of a contract that he's gonna present.
Yeah.
You know?
And he will do that. And I talked to him today. I said, "As quickly as possible, John." He said, "He can get it in two weeks." That means it's either, it's, it's boilerplate for another project, and he would have to strip out the scope, pricing, title from another project and recreate it specifically for our-
Or take his proposal and add the pertinent information of insurance and so on and so forth.
Yeah, he said two weeks.
Well, I guess the, for the board, and if people can help me kind of recollect, did we not, in concept, give the verbal at the last meeting that go forward with Lake Savers?
Yes.
So I'm gonna go back to kind of my original question. Is this resolution something you need to get on the contractor's books? Cause sometimes what ends up happening is, and especially whoever the authority is that you're communicating with, the contractors need something in writing. And I, I just wanted to make sure that that isn't what this for. But, and I'm, I'm one vote, but, you know, I wouldn't sign a resolution for, I'm not in favor of signing a resolution for $150,000 or not take seed if I haven't seen the contractors-
I'd be much more comfortable with an executive session and special meeting once we have it in hand.
And we can do that at the drop of a hat. We went through this last time, and we actually did a roll call on who could meet the first of next week, or tomorrow, or whatever. But I think we requested from Josh last meeting the contract to contact John Tucci and ask him for his contract so that we didn't run into timeframe.
Okay. That, that I was unaware of.
Okay.
The resolution is my idea, not Josh's, not, certainly not Tucci's. He does not need a resolution for his P and L. In other words, that does not become a, an account receivable the minute that resolution is signed. He would just assume work off of a contract, or a purchase order even. At 150,000, it's not extraordinary, or 125, not extraordinary at all, for that level to be signed on a purchase order. As long as the insurance language is there. So we need, we need appropriate State of Oregon compliance with insurance, workers' comp.
Right.
Well, does special districts, you know, we kind of had a little bit of this conversation. I know you weren't here last month, too. So does special districts have a blanket contract for hire that would have the necessary language that we could modify to meet the water improvement? I mean, is that a quicker way to go and then send that to John and make sure?
I don't know that they do.
If they have anything like that, it's gonna be very, very general.
Right. Tom, you're used to dealing with contracts like this. I know that that's been your expertise and stuff, and that's one of the reasons why we like to have you around. One, just only one. But if we, if we can, I, I think that the board, last time, we in essence said, "Hey, we wanna go with Lake Savers. Have them develop a, a contract, send it to us, we'll review it, and we can meet an executive session. We can sign, then move to a regular session after some discussion with the board and look at the different parts to it, and then, and then move to a regular session and approve it if, if, with any changes that may need to be taken place." And we can expedite that within, I mean, I won't be here next week. I won't be available. Most of us are pretty flexible to do that within, before the coming meeting.
Okay.
Tom, can I ask you, because I agree with Kent, I think that you have a lot more expertise in this than I do. Why did you make the recommendation for the resolution?
Only because that's standard board practice. When you're, when you're obligating yourself to that kind of a project, scope of project, importance of project, and funding, that's generally done by a resolution. Isn't necessary, isn't lawfully required. So I was just assuming that's what you would want ultimately, perhaps next month. So I talked with Josh and recommended, and you can't, recommended that that be done tonight as a preparatory measure prior to fully executing this. However-
So if we sign the resolution, we get the contract in two weeks, and we don't like something about the contract, what have we lost?
Uh, nothing. You've lost a few minutes discussing and signing, discussing the and signing the resolution. And it can certainly be rescinded. However, what you-
So what does the resolution do?
The resolution simply-
Acknowledges officially-
That the board has decided to approve the project. The project-
So it's no different, it's just putting in writing what we said last month?
That's correct. That's correct.
So then, Steve, with that being said, do you see any reason not to sign the resolution?
Well, I, so I-
Or do you agree with that?
Extra, so here's one thing that I'm just gonna make a blanket statement on. And until I see the resolution, maybe it can be passed down. So if we, in public meeting, and it's open to the public, it's televised, and we go through the formalized process of approving a project and directing staff to go forward with it, that I would have thought was gonna be enough. And so time is of the essence, and we had talked about that at the last meeting. And so we were ready to look at a contract, feeling that John Tucci had one that he would normally lose, use on his other projects that we could have seen in five days. And I guess it's surprising that we don't have it, and then we're just extending the process by going through a formality that I don't know that it takes a resolution. And in answer to your question, I don't mind doing this. I, I just don't want to be doing things twice and then be running because we could have taken care of this three weeks ago.
So this does not speed up nor slow down where we're going?
From what I'm hearing-
It's a formality.
Yeah, I'm recommending that you don't necessarily need to execute a resolution on this. And Tina, you, you had an idea, and, and I think it's correct. I will call Tucci tomorrow and say, "We need your contract immediately, like Monday." And force him to amend his contract over the weekend, if that's what he has to do to get something, a boilerplate to us. And then get that to Josh, and he can get it to all of you, and then this can be working next week.
Except for some minor detail, the specifics of our project, I think the contract that he's, the contracts he's had would be very similar.
I'm assuming he's gonna take his proposal and stuff it into a contract.
The only, the only thing that-
With some formality.
That needs to, you know, he needs to consider is Oregon State statutes so that he meets those.
Right.
We have that. But my, my thought after last board meeting, just like here, Steve, is that, hey, tell Tucci, put, give us a contract. We'll then be able to look at it and-
Continue to go full steam, yeah.
We're, we're in essence saying-
Come on.
Yeah, we, we've chosen him out of the three bidders or proposals that we've seen. We, we like what we've seen with him in his presentations. We've had an executive session before, and then what he produced for us that, that you put together in a nice format for us to take a look at. And all we need is John to-
Step up?
Yes.
So June 14th, last month, June 14th, Steve Brown motioned to move forward to secure a contract with Lake Savers. So move forward, just not moving forward four weeks later when we motioned to move forward.
We, we just want-
So we want a phone call. We want some kind of contract to look at.
Okay, we're good.
Yeah, that's where we're at.
All right.
Is that, is that good enough for?
Sure.
Okay.
A solution.
And then, Tom, Josh, then we're happy to meet between now and next meeting. Make sure that we can meet the timeline frame so that we don't have to push this back a year.
Right. We don't, absolutely don't wanna do that. And I'm available next week, and maybe we can do kind of a informal, Kathy, are you available?
Yes, I am.
Yeah. Tina?
I am.
And so almost, almost everybody is available next week. And then, yeah, I'm not available next week. I am the following week, but we've got enough for a quorum. And I, I know that each of us trusts the other board members to, to have the best interests of the lake involved. So-
Very good.
We're ready to move forward.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Okay? Good. That, that is, you know, honestly, I was gonna make a comment. This is, if it's not the biggest thing, it's the next biggest thing that's ever happened with this board on the lake. It's certainly the most we've ever spent. It brings together years of work by previous boards. And we, I think it's, it's a great time for Devils Lake Water Improvement District and the potential for improving water quality. So it's exciting. Other than planting grass carp, I can't think of a better thing that we've done. And so I, I pre-
It's exciting.
And it's exciting for me, and I appreciate the, all the work that previous boards have done in order to bring us to this point. We're just trying to do the last step. And then when it comes time, September, and we move forward, and we construct it, we'll have to have a little party, I think.
Big party.
So just a question, Tom, what was, what's your availability? Is this your last day? Are you coming back next week? Or what's your kind of timeframe for some lake review?
I have a meeting in Salem every Wednesday at 9:00 AM on another project.
So are you scheduled here weekly?
Weekly Mondays, however, I'd like to work to get this wrapped up as quickly as possible. So I'll coordinate with Josh, and whenever I need to be here, or I can add value to the process, then I'll be here.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Now, did we want to talk about one other thing? Low-pressure water system evaluation, sewer system evaluation?
Yeah.
Very briefly?
The net, you bet. We can skip right to that.
Okay. Staff met with Kevin Shreve, the area supervisor for Civil West Engineering. I asked for an update, and he gave me quite a bit of information. He, he just sent us an invoice. They are 25% invoiced in dollar value, and more than that in work completed. He's had ongoing discussions with E1 regarding individual system costs. We had a, I set up, and we had a meeting with county planning and public works regarding several things. One thing that came out was a new rule effective one July on accessory dwelling units and the impact around the east side of the lake. And there could be a reasonable impact, in my mind, a large impact with the creation of the approval of accessory dwelling units. And so it was asked of the planning director, "What does that mean?" He said, "Well, think of a mother-in-law's house on your property."
A casita.
Yes, casita. And that would mean water and sewer. So that means that the county who just had this dumped on them at their level was scurrying to get some regulations put in place. So it means that there could be additional hookup requirements on East Devils Lake Road. Right now, the PACE report has a number of X.
Right.
For a maximum of X plus, XXXX.
It wouldn't be an additional hookup, would it? It would just be basically an additional bedroom.
No, these are standalone facilities, not a bedroom.
So different than like a medical hardship dwelling?
Yeah. This, this would be like a three-bay shop.
Right.
This would be like a 600-square-foot house on a four-acre or five-acre piece of property. So you have primary dwelling. You have accessory dwelling, not attached.
Right.
Each takes water sewer. Cannot be borrowed from the primary residence.
Are you sure?
That's what I was led to believe.
Oh, cause we have a medical hardship dwelling. We're on the same septic, same well.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's different than sewer and city water.
It, it probably is based on capacity of septic system. If the system is oversized, then there's a possibility to join the ADU to the primary. Using same. But they felt there would be, it would have an impact, and they have not studied that impact. So setting that aside, that was, that was quite a topic of discussion. There was a discussion with the county sanitarian, sanitarian regarding existing septic decommissioning requirements, and they are fairly simple. And they're without fine, and it's primarily, one has to pump their tank and disconnect the tank and drain field from the dwelling and tee over to the new system.
And fill the tank.
Fill the tank, but it does not speak to purging of the drain field.
I don't, I think you just have to disconnect it from the tank and fill the tank with sand, right?
But there's nothing to say there's a purge requirement of the drain field. So that is, that's really the way it-
Yeah. So on the current system that was the LID that was approved in my neighborhood, and we've had several people hook up to the E1 pump and the sewer, and the drain field is just left intact. There is no requirement from the county when any of the neighbors put that in. There was a requirement to vacate the existing septic. In one instance, they, because of location, couldn't vacate the tank. And the tank was like really, one of those really old ones that you never want to find that are, you know, boards and a little bit of concrete in a square hole. And they put the E1 tank in there, and then they put sludge around it, kind of pack it in and everything, and the county- And the county allowed them to do that through the permitting. But what they told the contractor is they don't want them to go out and find the drain field and disrupt the drain field, 'cause that could open up a big can of worms.
Literally.
Literally.
I guess my question is, you know, I'm trying to think back on the PACE report and I know that there is like room for the development of a number of further-
Additional dwellings.
Additional, yeah, dwellings and stuff.
I think only like 400 or something though, wasn't it?
I thought it was like 560 or so, it was somewhere around 500. I, I can't remember exactly, but then I know that, that the design of that system was such that it could only hold so much. And, and so is this, is this impacting it is what, what I'm asking? Is that what they're saying?
Probably not. I think the biggest issue that Kevin is finding is that the cost estimates borne by the PACE report perhaps are not accurate. They are-
Too low, too high?
They are too low, probably. The PACE report did not include a full definition of the run of the main line. And it will, unless something changes dramatically, it will run primarily down the west lane of East Devil's Lake Road, which is the southbound lane. And there, and it will not be a trench. Actually, it will not be a patched trench. It will be a trenched line, but the overlay will have to be to the, to the center line. So there's a significant amount of grind and pave along with four and a half miles of trenching. That does not include loop drive and a few of the others down the main line. So there will be some additional costs plus the cost of added time, you know, future, future cost of this project. So that will be borne out by the draft project. That will be here probably at the end of August.
Well, that's what we wanted to know is exactly, these are the, the real costs that are involved in doing something like this.
That's exactly what you wanted to know and what you need to know.
Right, yes, thank you.
So additionally, their financial model tables are set up, they're in draft and they're populating those and the numbers are coming together well. And again, the first invoice is in and it puts them at 25% completion. Questions?
Great. Looking forward to that. Lots of things coming together?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Do we not have the PACE report on the website?
It should be on there, under the sewer section, absolutely.
It is? Okay, under resources?
Uh, it's under the sewer project page area. There should be about six of them down there.
Okay.
Josh, you wanna fill us in on the rest of projects and operations? The video monitoring project and grant updates?
It's not nearly as exciting as what Tom just shared with us.
I guess not.
I'm, I'm pretty happy with the video monitoring project. Last month, I reported that we're putting in the data lines along with the infrastructure for the airstream down at Vivian's Dock. Those lines are in this week, Justin has them installed. I'll be working with Kent and Dewey to start working on our equipment and camera install down there now, now that we have the data lines and power in. So we can run them and we'll shoot them down the lake and down the river and very soon have a live camera feed to our website-
Great.
Of the D River and north up the river, so it'll be great. And if that really works, if we do good, we may have some residual funding left over from our grant from special districts to install maybe an additional camera or two. But as a pilot, we'll get the two up and see where we're at at that point, see what the costs are. Also, our-
What's your plan on mountainous camera?
Uh, it's gonna be down at the end, the far end of Vivian's, the, I guess it'd be the north end of their dock.
North end, east end?
Yeah, next to the little parking lot, next, not the big parking lot, the gravel one.
Oh, okay.
You know.
So the east side, yeah.
Yeah, the corner where the, where the lines are coming out.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, right there, so. 'Cause we went down there and took like you and I did, just to see how much you could see from each spot. And if we saw it, if we looked on the other end of the dock, it kinda closed it in from the trees and everything.
Right, yeah.
Visualize the, the river, so.
So are you gonna be able to turn this thing or is it just fixed?
It's gonna be fixed for the moment and we'll see. Some of those get very pricey very quick depending on how much you want. I know there's one that is for the surface down at Nelscott, Jimmy also hooked up. And it's outstanding, but it was, I think it was like a $6,000 camera.
And what are we gonna be looking at, do you know?
For the whole project cost?
For our, for our camera. Are we looking west?
Yeah, well, no, we're gonna be looking, I guess it will be west, yeah, west down the river.
Looking down, down river.
And then north-ish west up the lake is the plan.
So it's a fisheye camera?
Yeah, probably about a 150-degree view, something like that, I'd imagine. So we'll see. And then that's something that we can mess around with a little bit too, because we're looking at a lower-cost cameras in a waterproof case, which will be essentially an FTP-type camera to get it up to the website. And those are lower cost, you know, less than a couple hundred bucks each and you can get different lenses for them. So it's something that we should be able to tweak a little bit too as we get, after we get-
So I'd just like to consider having our, our staff gauge in proximity to the camera so we can monitor that.
Well, that, and that's another component of this. Since we have the data lines in and since we're gonna have those cameras in as well, we may potentially be able to work with Granger or a couple of other pump and industrial manufacturers and get an FTP readout of our lake level and get that out to the website too. So looking, looking ahead for what we're gonna do with the district and grant funding and using the infrastructure we're already installing for the cameras, we may be able to do that and in addition to weather station too, so. Trying to get as much info on that website as we can. Yeah, 'cause we have, you know, we have so many people that are out of town that would love to see it, that wanna come down for the weekend or even visitors. And I know that's something we always struggle with here at the lake, that it's a beautiful 700-acre lake. Some people live here for two years and don't know there's a lake. So now we'll, we'll have that visualized out there on, on the website and everyone knows what and where the internet is, so that's where we're gonna put the lake to.
Thanks.
Next, we have a grant update. The Reservoir Fisheries Habitat Partnership Grant Opportunity Deadline is coming up in about six weeks. They typically give $15,000 to $30,000 for projects that support fisheries and habitat restoration. And we have quite a bit of fish and wildlife habitat here on Devil's Lake. So right now, I'm looking at what kind of projects we can get together for that. Maybe even work with Kent a little bit in the SOS and come up with something that we can use and apply for those grant funds as well. 'Cause I think they definitely fit and there's something that we can add to that opportunity. But right now, I'm collecting materials as far as our eligibility for that grant and making sure that, that we can get in on that. I think the only other thing is in new business, if you want me to go ahead and do that.
Go ahead.
It's, this came up here this last week. I spoke with Miles, who's been working with the Planning Commission here at Lincoln City. It's been requested that we discuss and hopefully approve a letter of support for the Foothills Boulevard project that Lincoln City is working on right now, which is essentially a, an artery, a road that'll connect off of East Devil's Lake Road. Being as that's a large road project, the city is also gonna be chasing down some grant money, infrastructure funding for sewer and other, other installations on that road. So as a board, just wanted to have the discussion and put that in front of you if you feel that's a project that we would like to support.
So basically, that's bypassing downtown and-
Well, not, yeah.
And it's, it's basically increasing the ability to use East Devil's Lake Road as a bypass. Is that correct?
A portion of it, correct.
The majority of it.
Yes. Still, a majority, still a portion.
Where does East Devil's Lake Road start and 14th Street stop?
Yeah, I'm not sure where that, yeah, I honestly am not sure where that is.
It's a Quade's building.
It's where?
It, well, technically, when you, you head down the hill, it becomes East Devil's Lake Road and 14th Street ends, or 12th Street, 12th Street.
So you could, you could certainly bring more visibility to the lake.
I'm not sure how that falls under our purview on our charge. Like, I mean, do you have an idea of, you know, of, of our-
Kind of our role in that?
Well, yeah, in our, in our, help me out here with the terminology, in our lake-
Well, I, I guess-
Charter.
The question would be is that if that becomes the, a help for a sewer system, that by, by developing that, does that help with the costs, eventual costs of developing a sewer system? That's my belief. Am I wrong, Miles?
I, I think the-
Could you come up to the microphone, please?
Foothill Boulevard is, has been designed so that it is only for local use, basically. The traffic will, that is generated, will be generated from further growth up the hill on 32nd Street and then it will connect to East Devil's Lake Road eventually. The school dis, they'll be building, I think, 700 units on that hillside. So it's gonna take a while, but it'll take a while to build the road also. My hope is that it gets funded gradually so that when the school district develops their school in the, at the Holly Farm and Cascade Head area is more developed, there'll be a bypass for local people to get there, get around town when the traffic is so thick in July, August and September. And in addition to tho, that-
Is this a ma, in a master plan, Miles?
The street will be out of the tsunami zone so that if anything happens to 101 during a catastrophic event, there'll be a, a street that will connect the, the city, basically.
Is this part of a, a master plan, right? This is part of a master plan?
This is part of the master plan.
And do we have any maps of that yet? Is there any preliminary maps of that master plan with what they're proposing?
I think that the master plan has been approved by the city council, at least for the Nelscott Gap area where they're planning a-
And, and that Foothills Boulevard is part of that?
Foothills Boulevard is part of that master plan.
I think it goes, Chair. Goes into, does it really follow and can we affect?
Right.
And I think if we are gonna have people asking us to support, we have to go back to what the core of the board is, and does it align with that?
Yeah, I'm not sure that it's in the mission of the board to make comments about the roads. I don't know.
I think the board is a part of this community. And in that regard, this street goes by the high school and goes down to 51st Street. And this is a citywide street that will improve the livability of the city, especially in July, August and September when the traffic on 101 is-
Still better than any day in Portland.
I can't disagree with that.
I wonder if that's true or not either anymore.
Well, and I think, I guess-
Go to Portland.
You know, as the city council and Planning Commission gets further along and the input is there, I think we need something-
Are they requesting our, uh, us-
Who's requesting it, I guess?
I think Miles is.
No, this request is of the city. Council has authorized it and is supporting it because it's the city. But the county has joined in, I'm going to ask-
But who is requesting our, a letter of recommendation or a letter of-
The Planning Commission wants to see community support with a, a letter from any-
Have they published that anywhere?
I, I don't think so because Deborah Nicholson has a rush on this project-
You haven't received anything?
Because it's due in Washington DC on July 19th.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm gonna say again that I feel that it has to align with our mission and any proposal for a recommendation actually should come to the board through the manager or the director, executive director that has the specifics that are being asked of the board and why.
I'd like to see a map of what they're actually-
I, I have the Nelscott Gap master plan pulled up here, if I can find.
Foothill Boulevard should show up at the top of 32nd Street. Where, and it connects to the high school.
Yeah, I, I, not that, I'm sure it's a good project and, you know, well-needed for that area. I, I wonder how it, if it goes through, all of a sudden, you know, East Devil's Lake Road gets more traffic.
It's already got quite a bit more lately.
But in a year or two, when we go to, this is an excellent build grant if it still exists, to get them to, under the road, put in the spine of the sewer system.
No, I know that, that's why I asked that, Miles, is that, I mean, is this a, that's why my first thought was is that, does this help with a possible sewer line?
That, that's what I'm, I'm thinking. But practically, it's gonna be 20 years before the road connects to East Devil's Lake Road.
Right, I see that.
Basically the facts, I'm not gonna see it.
Most of us aren't. I think we're all feeling the same age. But, you know, if, I guess my feeling is if, I, I don't know how we can impact it. Not that, not that we don't think in general it's a good idea for the city as well as, I, I mean, I think any improvements that we have in roads and stuff around here are beneficial to this community. I just don't know that our, our support for that will impact it one way or the other.
So this says, I'm reading off of the city Lincoln City's master plan now. It says classify Southeast Foothills Boulevard connecting Southeast 32nd Street to Southeast 23rd. So that would not connect in with East Devil's Lake Road based off of that.
If it connects to South, 23rd though, the plan is eventually to build the thing. But it, it's a long way from 32nd to 23rd Street. But that enables the plan to-
So maybe that's a different plan other than the Nelscott plan? 'Cause that's all this plan identifies.
I don't, I don't think the plan is, is developed past 23rd at this point in time.
Well, because you get past 23rd and you're no longer in Nelscott.
Yeah, and they only had the-
In north of 23rd Street, I think Bard is-
Funds to develop the Nelscott Gap because that was paid for by others.
More information.
Any, any, is, any further discussion from the board? So, thanks, Miles. Thanks, Josh. Um, do we have any non-agend items from the board?
I would like to bring up a couple things. So, the financials and- the financials, uh, and Teresa, um, you had sent me a, a correspondence saying that Teresa hadn't got the financials in, uh, and that she was waiting on the assessor's office to get, uh, uh, those. Um, and then we get financials in our packets that don't have the assessor's figures, and they're incomplete. Uh, so, um, a couple comments, and I guess I would like the board's support on this. You know, if we're gonna be looking at financials at the meeting, uh, I need, uh, as a treasurer, to be able to review the financials prior to the meeting. That was the first, uh, request. And the second would be, uh, to have them early enough. And, um, we still can't seem to, I, I can't understand why Teresa, uh, she was getting them to us the Friday before the meeting, and, you know, I even said the Monday was adequate. And, um, I just don't feel that I could properly do my job as a treasurer to look at the uh, completeness of the financials and the accuracy of them if I don't have the reports. And so, uh, I would ask again that we relate this to, uh, our accountant. And it's only because I wanna end up making sure that if I'm assigned a job, that I have the tools to work with.
No, I, I agree totally with you, Steve. I, I, here it is, the 12th of the month. I'm hoping that we, and I know certain things come up at different times.
Right.
And that, that can happen. Um, it's just, we, I, I think if possible, um, we can sit down with Teresa and, you know, line out some dates, say, hey, this is, is there a, can we, can we make these dates for the board meeting, um, to have them a couple hours before the board meeting, maybe?
Well, she's been able to do it.
Right.
And, um, and-
I just thought maybe it was because of the holiday this month or something.
Right.
Well, there's, there's a couple other, uh, issues that are happening here. So, it's our year-end, so the final assessment. So, again, you know, I was thinking that, uh, you know, getting those final figures, uh, to be able to put in, um, for the tax revenue that's received to the district. So, she has that figure in here for an annual tot, total comparative, June 17 through 18. But she doesn't have June 18's revenue listed here. So, is it there, or isn't it there, is what I'm looking at also, uh, on the financials that I have that are incomplete.
Yeah, and, and that's what Teresa had explained to me what happened this time, and that's why forwarded that correspondence on that she had sent me, that showed that the county was doing it, but it hadn't came in yet. Um, one remedy to that that I've discussed with Teresa would be to push the board meetings a week further and do the third Thursday of each month instead of the second. So, that way, there's more time between the county deadline of receiving their revenue and their taxes on the information they need to get to us.
But that's not really the issue. So, we budget, we budget, uh, annually, and then we break it down in monthly.
Monthly.
And we don't need an accurate assessment. She can use the budgeted number. It's better than no number. And then, when she has it on the next cycle, she'll use her budgeted number or the real number, and then she'll add the dollars in that are the difference and adjust it. It's, most importantly is, is I wanna end up making sure from month to month that we're on budget and that, um, the, the reports are accurate. And so, I just, uh, it gets me when they're not accurate. You know, that I'm asked to approve, and, and I would ask the board also, another thing that we should be doing at the beginning of, uh, of the meeting is, um, get approval of the, of the financials and-
Well, that's part of the consent agenda.
So, it is. Uh, but we're not taking-
But we can separate it out.
Yeah, well, we're not taking, uh, a call on-
We get it late generally.
Too, so, where, again, we have a process.
You generally look at it, you, I mean, I'm just saying what I do is, I generally look at it and say, oh, that looks about right.
About right. Well, and I'm looking at it and saying that if it was, somebody said, will you approve, uh, the, the financials? I would say no, because they're incomplete. So, at what point do, you know, do I bring that up?
We never approve it.
What, uh, how would you like to do things differently?
Yeah, so-
Yes, that's my question.
Well, and, uh, I've had the conversation with Teresa, and she can use the budgeted numbers if it's not there and make the adjustment in the next month's meeting, okay? But it's important that if this board's gonna have a treasurer, that we're looking at the financials. Everybody makes mistakes, and they're not necessarily intentional mistakes, but it's my job to end up making sure these financials are right for the board, and I wanna have the proper tools to do it. So, we can do that, and, uh, and then, as a Chair, what I would like to suggest would be that we get those reports, and then we have the discussion. Are they correct, or are they not correct?
All right, that'd be fine with me. I don't have a problem with that.
No.
Yeah, uh, getting something that's not correct, uh, it shouldn't be. And they're not-
We agree.
They're not correct in our packets, so.
Can, can we work with Teresa and then-
Yes, Josh and I will, will get Teresa.
And then the, the next step is that at the next board, board meeting, we'll just, we'll have a discussion of that.
Right.
Instead of a consent agenda for, for that, we can do a discussion of-
Can you break that out?
And we can do that.
On the agenda.
That sounds, that's-
Oh, oh, make a new, yeah.
Well, it's the responsible, yeah, it's just a responsible thing to do, so.
Perfect. I, I appreciate that, Steve.
Hey.
And, and we're good with that, everybody?
Yep.
All right. Um, any other non-agenda items? You said you had more than one?
No, that was it.
Anyone else have non-agenda items? Uh, comments from citizens on agenda, non-agenda items? Any comments from citizens that are here? Thank you for staying, by the way. Um, additional board comments?
I have one additional comment.
Oh, yes.
I'd like to show off our new, um, volunteer vests.
Yay!
This is for the, uh, apparently any special projects member that'd like to come and assist in our roadside cleanup and any other cleanup SOS program. Anything that we're associated with will be visible.
Sweet.
The, uh-
And walk up Park Lane.
By the way, the funds, the funding, uh, it's not out of our, uh, do what pocket. It's gonna be, um, donated by anonymous donor, so.
Oh, wow, cool.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you, anonymous donors.
Yeah, that was a very, it's a good way to advertise the good things that we do, as we're picking up garbage on East and West Devil's Lake Road.
And-
One other new business.
And walking up Thompson Creek and collecting E. coli samples.
Samples, too.
So, one small computation, um, there's, we're in the process of, now that we have a power line at Vivian's, we're in the process of transitioning our, uh, Airstream Pro down to that location, once it's available. Um, right now, the water's just a little bit too low to accommodate that unit, so, um, I've replaced that unit temporarily with a smaller unit. Uh, it's called an Aqua Thruster, and it's a muck digester, so it just moves water. It doesn't displace fill, it doesn't make sedimentation. It doesn't do anything other than enhance fish habitat. And it, right now, it's, uh, it's plugged in, so it's moving 400 gallons a minute. And it computates out to 24,000 gallons an hour, and then in a 24-hour period, moving about a little over half a million gallons of water every day.
Oh, wow.
Yes, good job.
When we go to, when that area gets improved, we're ready for the big airstream, then we'll be pushing a million gallons of water every day, or every hour, sorry.
Uh, Bill, can we, uh, do we have time to move the airstream down to Horseshoe Bay to do that? I mean, I, normally, this time of the year-
Sure.
The lake is in fabulous shape, I think. Um, I was out on the dock and I, yesterday morning, and it was about as clear as I can remember it at this time of the year, and, um, but that has historically been a trouble spot for us, and if we can prevent that from taking place-
We'll make a phone call to Pat Dewey and make sure we have a, a green light there, which I, I would expect that we would, so, yeah, we'll make that move.
Yeah.
Just working on his other house a lot.
Great, thank you, thanks.
Good.
I, I have one last comment. I'd like to say, uh, you know, it's exciting time to be a part of Devil's Lake Water Improvement District with all the great things that are happening, that are coming together, um, that have taken years for people to work on. Previous boards and such, uh, have brought us to this point, and it's only gonna get better. We have a, a great opportunity this, um, this fall for installation of an aeration system. And the potential impact, positive impact on the lake is great, so.
Very good.
It's, it's a neat time. Thank you all. Other than that? Nope, any other? This, this meeting's adjourned, thank you.
Here's Josh.
Longer than usual.